Good evening and welcome to the Marion City Council meeting. It is March 4th, 2025. It is 7:00 PM in the Marion City Council chambers. And we're going to call this meeting to order and begin with prayer by Councilman David Kane.
Dear Heavenly Father, all good things happen when you pray first. And this is the most important part of the meeting. As we humbly come before you and ask for your presence here, I know you're already here, but we ask that you come and be with us. Guide our thoughts and our words and our wisdoms through this meeting. Bless each and every one that are here. Bless each and one, each and everyone that are listening in the audience. Continue to bless this city. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you, and followed by a pledge of allegiance with Councilman Brian Cowgill. All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Fordice.
Here.
Brunner. Klein. Devine.
Here.
Whitten.
Here.
Cowgill.
Here.
McKinley.
Here. Okay, so tonight, we don't have a community spotlight. I actually had one, but just in time before the agenda came out, they became ill. So we're going to move it to another meeting. And we don't have a city employee spotlight. It was going to be Whitney Gilbert, but we're going to move it to another meeting because she has some good things going on that interrupted her day today. So, which we'll probably share that at the next council meeting. And so we're going to skip community spotlight and city employee spotlight and move to the consent agenda. And if anyone has any questions, comments, feel free. If not, I would entertain a motion. Okay, we got a motion on the floor by Councilman Kane. Any second?
Sure.
Second by Councilman Klein. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Fordice.
Aye.
Klein.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Whitten.
Yes.
Cowgill.
Yes.
McKinley.
Yes. And moving into committee reports. Do we have any committee reports this evening?
Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead.
So the Rules Committee did meet tonight. The Rules Committee consists of myself as chair, Mr. Cowgill, Mr. McKinley, to discuss appointments to the Marion City Utility Service Board. What was discussed in that meeting tonight was to remove, for the appointments, any political affiliations, whether you had to be Democrat or Republican. We want to remove that from those appointments. And that was moved through committee with a, and passed to the city councils, the full city council, with a favorable recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you for that report, Councilman Kane. Any other committee reports, liaison reports? Councilman Whitten.
Yeah, we, uh, we had a meeting on February 24th at 5:30 PM for the Code Enforcement Committee. We have, we were reviewing general ordinance 04-2025 abandonment of vehicles and parking on residential properties. A great majority of the council showed up, as well as the city attorney, and it was very well attended, and we generated a bunch of questions. Everybody who is here is to email me questions, and then we're going to forward them to the code enforcement folks and also try to get the police department to come for another code enforcement committee meeting in the future, probably within the next week. It was not forwarded back to council, so one more code enforcement meeting hopefully.
Thank you. Now, do you want to give a deadline for the council members to get you that? So, you know.
Yeah, I'd like to have them as soon as possible. If we could get them all together by Thursday, that would be great.
So maybe Thursday midnight?
Sure.
Thursday at midnight. If you have any questions, get them to Councilman Whitten for that next code enforcement committee meeting. Great, thank you. Any other committee reports? Councilman Cowgill.
We had a, actually, it was last Tuesday, I think. We had a traffic commission meeting, and that was too just, we, you know, we vacated First Street because of the River Rock going in there. But the police and fire, that's, they use that road a lot because that's a quick way to get to the hospital and this. So is what we discussed with Second Street of making it, instead of the one-way heading east, and making it two-way street. So that way, it's still, they have a quick route and able to get there and everything. And if we do that, it's from Adams to Boots, Michael, is that what it was?
That's Branson to Nebraska.
Okay, it was neither one of those. It was Branson to Nebraska. That was the other meeting. You wasn't at the other one. So, uh, we, we'll, I'm going to call a public safety committee meeting, and we'll discuss that, see what the, the committee thinks, and then we'll forward that on to the full council at that point.
Thank you, Councilman Cowgill. Any other committee meeting, or committee reports? Yeah, Councilwoman Devine.
Okay, we had the regular meeting of the Board of Public Works this, yesterday at 10:00. It was a fairly lengthy meeting to start off with. They began with a city property transfer at the southeast corner of 33rd in Nebraska. They transferred six lots over to the redevelopment commission. The thought being that, that maybe what they planned to do is probably put out some sort of outdoor food truck court area, possibly amphitheater, to bring in another area to draw citizens in and allow them to participate in activities that may be city-sponsored or not city-sponsored. So they did, they did approve that. And then the building department gave a report on quite a few different unsafe structures that have been on the list. They up, they went ahead and issued demolition orders on 715 East 28th, 363 East Swayze, 2105 South Selby, 1413 West Third, 2313 West 12th, 34th 16th South Meridian. They also had several where the property owners showed up and discussed. There were two that they stayed an additional 30 days, which was at 215 West 7th and 805 East 22nd. And then a couple that they upheld the demo order and went ahead and moved forward, 116 West 26th and 1813 West Jeffress. And then they had one that had a follow-up, 120 West 30th, where the permits have been purchased and they have already started the process of doing the required repairs. So they're continuing to monitor that and make sure that he is continuing to work on that property. I think one of the questions, and this is just my editorial comment here at the end of this, in talking about the demo orders, while we're cleaning these up and they do the demolition orders, we then pay for those demolition orders and put them on as liens on the property. Some of them, the property owners did not object to the demos being done. I just want to make sure that, I guess in my thought process, that we're not doing so many of these demos that the owners, instead of taking care of it themselves, are waiting for us to do it. And then they walk away from the property and leave it to tax sale, because I know at tax sale point that those liens will go away. I want to make sure that we're not possibly losing some of those reimbursements that we should. And I don't know what the right answer to that is, but wanted to bring it up while it was in my head and something for us to look further into as we're continuing down the demolition process. And that was the committee.
Great, thank you so much. And either committee or liaison reports for the council. Great. Okay, thank you for all that. We're going to move into unfinished business, the only thing on the agenda tonight. Additional appropriation 2-2025, third reading.
An ordinance appropriating certain funds in the amount of $2,200,000 from the general fund to border works for capital improvements. Mayor Morrell has introduced a capital improvement plan aimed at driving significant enhancements across the city. This strategic initiative focuses on addressing critical improvement, improvement needs identified within each city department. Developed through close collaboration with department heads, the plan ensures that allocated funds are utilized effectively and efficiently to achieve the city's goals and priorities. Speaking, Mayor Ronald Morrell Jr.
Good evening, council. I'm so glad to be here. We've been working at this for a while now. I really appreciate you all for taking the time and meeting with all of our department heads, taking the time for the budget. I think we had, I think we're about five or so, six meetings in now on this. So it's a lot of effort, and it's a big ask, so I don't take for granted that you guys heard this and are willing to move forward with this ask. It's needed for our city. It's needed for us to be able to execute what needs to be get done in achieving excellence in city, in city business. So at a third reading, I entertain any questions or ideas, and looking forward to move forward with this.
Great, appreciate that, Mayor, and appreciate all your patience as we burn down the final oil on this one to the last meeting. So, any council members with final questions, comments? Vice President Fordice.
I sent an amendment appropriation to everybody on the council, and this is after I went through all of the bids, estimate, and hard numbers and real cost on what I felt that we could sustain and afford on this appropriation. And everybody should have had a copy. If you don't, I have copies. So I would like to have an amendment on this. If there's any questions on anybody, I'd be more than willing to answer them.
Can you use your microphone? Thanks.
What's your amendment?
The amendment is $1,967,468.
Is that a motion?
I was going to entertain any questions from anybody on the council before I made a motion to.
Well, that was a question.
Okay.
I got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is it, how did you come up with this, Gary? Is this just in your opinion that you think these, or, I mean, like, what come, how'd you come about this?
I came up with these numbers through actual cost and bids that were submitted to each department and the actual cost of each item that was requested.
Did the bids have a certain timeframe for cost, like that they were going to hold them for 30 days or until we approved the process? Because we'd have to factor in any change in costs from those bids to now.
I think most of them had 30 day or 60 days on them.
I, I, here is, I would like to pass this as it is, and the reason why is, I mean, between the department heads and the administration and us, we've been working on this for like 15 weeks, back and forth, and getting all this done. I have talked to the department heads, too. I spent a lot of time up here today. Not one of them has told me that everything that, that we asked for in the amounts was exactly what we need to do this job. I also know for a fact that, like Barnes and Noble, that you are financial experts and stuff, they have said, you guys need to spend some money, because you've got the money, you, you need to get, take care of the things. That don't mean just go out and spend it, but you need to do the things that you've got taken care of. I know for a fact, we're losing out on some grants, because we've got enough money in the bank that they're saying you don't need help. And we all know that every one of our departments could use grants and need help. And I, you know, after 15 weeks, I know there was an email, I see most of the department heads are here, and I want to commend all of you guys for coming in, because I know y'all got an email saying that it looks like everything is good, you probably don't have to attend. I mean, I just got this email from you this afternoon. So, I mean, we've been working on all this other stuff for 15 weeks, and then to get an email for, what, $1.9 million cut, at the last second, on the last day of the third reading, I mean, I feel like this, this administration has been more transparent than my 30 years of dealing with the administration and the city. And to me, I don't feel like that's very transparent, that we wait till the last second and say, now we want to make cuts. I mean, man, we've been talking about this forever. I just, I'm not in favor of any cuts. I guess that's just my, my opinion.
Thank you, Councilman Cowgill. I do have a question for you, Vice President Fordice, and we've discussed this before. So, out of the 1.967 million, or I say, the difference between that number and the 2.2 request, I'm just trying to make heads from tails here, how much of that reduction is related to the difference between actual contracts we've received, or not actual, true estimates from contractors versus what was estimated? And then how much of this cut is things that you don't think they should have? Can you split that up for us?
Sure, be more than happy to. I appreciate that question. You're probably looking at $150,000 over ask compared to the actual bids, when I ran the exact numbers from some department to departments. So, you know, you're probably looking at the additional would have been like 50, right at $50,000. So the actual cut wasn't $200,000. The actual cut was probably less than that. But the real, the real numbers and real figures, and giving every department what they wanted on the real numbers, instead of just saying, I need this and it's going to cost 200,000, and then I go back and pull the bids, and it's 140,000 on the bid. So I took the actual bids, and instead of giving them 200,000, I took the actual bid at 140,000, and that's what I actually gave them for exactly the same thing that they wanted. So it, it's, it's not cutting. It's cutting the amount that they asked, but it's not cutting what they wanted. There were a few things on there that were just way overboard, that some things we still, we have that equipment, and we don't need, in my opinion, we don't need to double up on it, triple up on it, or so.
So on the email you sent, Gary, I'm just, so everything on the email is, you're asking to be taken away or no? I'm trying to figure out how, where the numbers are.
No, no, the email is actually what is, is going to, they are going to get. They are the actual items that each department asked for. It's just on some of the cost, Brian.
Okay.
Like, let's just say the police bathrooms, that ask was $140,000. If you go back and look at the bids, it was $60,100 is the actual bid from the construction company to do the bathrooms. If you go over the bids, and each department submitted them, and I'm very grateful to the department heads, they got them to me, they sent them to me. I'll just give you another example. It's, it's just really, really cut and dried, and it's, it's hard numbers is what I went by. Police cars, they want six police cars. We just bought police cars in January. We paid $41,399 a police car. Takes $8,000 of equipment to equip the police car. They asked for 360,000 for police cars, six police cars. It's 300,000 actual cost. Hard money. So there are some of the variations that I found, that I'm giving them what they're asking for, I'm just doing the hard numbers. If you're going to buy it and this is what it costs, that's what I'm willing to give you. Is it going to change? Sure, it might change. Chief Carr even told me, he knows that on some of this that he's asked, it's going to change a little bit from the time that he gets it. But he's got money in his budget. If it does change, that he can use the money in his budget to pay for it.
So do you have some of the estimates and quotes that are in addition to the ones that came in our final packet from the mayor?
All my quotes and, and everything that the department heads gave me, that they had, I asked, I don't know if they sent the actual bids. I mean, to each and every one of you, I just asked on every department that I could, that I needed the hard numbers, and did the research on them, and read each bid. So it was apple for apple, and, you know, everything was the same, and it wasn't different. So.
So let me, let me ask you a question, Vice President Fordice, as well, I think it's appropriate, if we're gonna, if you're going to ask to cut anything from anyone's, then if the department heads are here, then we'll definitely give them an opportunity to respond, and the mayor as well. Going back to my original question, so your, your ask, your total ask to reduce is 232,532, is that correct? When I subtract your number from 2.2 million?
No, the actual number of the appropriation is going to be $1,967,468.
No, I know, I'm saying the difference between what he's asking and what you're trying to amend.
It's two, 200 and, what, $33 and?
I, 232, 532, that's what I'm saying, that's the reduction you're looking at, is that correct? I just want to make sure we're.
Yes.
In an understanding.
Yes.
I didn't have a mic on. But you're saying 150,000-ish of that is just tightening up between a bid or an estimate and what was originally asked, is that correct?
Correct. Correct.
So you, and I just want to be certain, you said 150,000-ish. Do we have a solid number on that? Because I don't want to steer too far.
Yeah, it was right at, it was right at 150,000.
And so out of the.
Might have been a little over.
Out of that 150,000, can you break that down per department?
Sure. The 60,000 was on police cars. They asked for 360,000. Cost on the police cars is 300,000. On the bathrooms for the police department, they wanted 140,000. Actual cost is 60,100. Right there is $150,000.
So those are the two things.
Those are the two biggest things.
Big tightening, not wanting to ask.
Yeah, there were a couple other things on the fire department. It was the eight-wheel rescue vehicle. He had two quotes in there. One was a demo. It was 26,500. He had circled the brand new one, which was 30,000. But we just bought a demo fire truck, so I don't know why we would, couldn't buy. He had two quotes on there, and to me, when you get quotes, I take the lowest quote. That's just me. They also had a trailer for the Argo at $5,199. He had an additional trailer in there for 12,500. But there was an Argo trailer for 5,199. So I took that trailer instead of the $12,000 trailer.
Well, you know that both trailers are for two different things, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Because.
Yes, 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 sir. I sure did.
So, you know, if you don't mind, because I know you kind of have the floor on this, and I want you to make sure you get everything out, but I think maybe it would be appropriate at this time to at least address the police department request, so the bathrooms and the police car differences. Mayor, would you like to comment on that? Or anyone in the audience want to comment on that request? What he's, what he's stating?
No, no comment.
Okay. Any council members' thoughts on at least the police department bids versus original request?
Yeah, I'll make, I talked to Deputy Chief Stefanovas today, and I do know that the six cars that they're asking for, they need, because their, their fleet is so old. And yeah, they did get cars last year, but they, they need cars every year to, to get this. I mean, it, it's at a point of a safety issue for, for our officers and for our citizens. Police and fire vehicles, they're, they're not like regular vehicles. They are road hard. They go from zero to 60 and stop, zero to 60 and stop. I mean, it's, and I know, I mean, I've never been a police officer, but I've seen police chases, and they're, those things are really hairy. You know, you're making, you was a police officer, you probably know more than anybody, but, you know, they're making hairpin turns and stuff. I, I don't want these guys in 12, 15-year-old cars. It's, it's, we've got the money to get these guys what they want. They, the, this city has went so long without the stuff that they really need, and we are in a position to give everything that they need, and I, I just don't understand why we would not do that.
So I just want to, I definitely hear what you're saying, but are you saying, Vice President Fordice, that they can still get the 60,000, but for less? Is that what you're saying?
The six cars, is that, I mean, yeah, the six, the police cars are in there. Everything's in there.
So then.
Except a couple things.
Okay. Councilman Klein had his hands up.
Well, I think you just asked the question I was going to ask, because yes, MPD needs the cars, no doubt about it. I just want to make sure, what you're cutting is not the cars. Just an extra above the bid? Is that what I hear? But the cars stay bought?
All right. So I'd like to kind of put it back to the mayor again, you can say no comment again, but, I mean, I don't want any decisions made that would jeopardize that purchase. So, I don't know, would you or anybody from the police department want to address that cost difference?
No, no comment.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
So I don't have a problem moving forward with this ordinance as submitted by the, by the administration. I, I think as transparent as this administration has been, I think there's some wiggle room in there, because we all know how bids usually happen and work usually happens, that there's overruns and so forth. That gives a little bit of a cushion on that. Any monies that's not spent will be then returned to the pot, I presume.
Not if it goes in the border works.
Is that correct, Mr. Mayor? Yeah, sure. Thank you for that. That answers a lot of questions right there.
So just to kind of expand on that, so more for public understanding, if there is extra dollars that maybe aren't spent because maybe a price drops, or maybe they change their mind and not purchase that item, that money not getting spent will roll into the general fund next year? Correct?
Yes, we will still have, still have the funds. It would, it would still be in the line item label of capital improvement plan in the border works.
So do, if that were to happen, and do we have your commitment that if there is extra money outside, not used outside of what you're asking, that money would, you would allow that to roll into next year and not use for other miscellaneous items that weren't requested?
Yeah.
A commitment from you?
Yeah, we, we won't spend any money that wasn't asked for in the submission you have.
Appreciate that clarity. Councilman Marshall.
Hey, my own, yes. Well, I, I appreciate your due diligence and your research and all that, but I'm trying to understand, you've, you've made a couple references to taking things out, but you weren't specific. So I, I'm curious as to what those are. I'm talking to you.
Yeah. I'm listening to you.
Okay, I couldn't tell. So you did make a reference to taking some things out and some things that you thought were over and above what was reasonable, but you made no specific mention of what those things are. So I'm concerned about that. And then, you know, I don't really feel like I'm here to micromanage what the administration brings to us. I feel like they are presenting what they feel they need. So I'm comfortable with what the ask is, and I'm comfortable with. And I'm comfortable with the, the fact that the money's not gonna evaporate if it's not spent for these purposes. Or no one's going to take it and put it in their pocket. It's still gonna be our money in that fund. So I'm trying to understand what your fear is or what exactly where this is coming from. I think that's my question.
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. There's, there's no fear. I'm, I'm not advocating that somebody's gonna stick it in their pocket or anything. I'm just trying to get down to hard numbers when departments ask for certain things on equipment and stuff. And I, I would have to object to you saying that we're not micromanagers. Well, we pay the bills every two weeks. We're supposed to go through every invoice and every check of everything that they spend, and we've got the right to question it. To me, that's micromanaging. That's what we're supposed to do. Even though we have gave them the money and the budget to spend it, we still have to go over the bills and approve them every two weeks. So, but getting back to this is that I'm just trying to be fiscally responsible. I don't have a problem with a lot of these asking, most of them. I just, if I go to buy something and they tell me it's gonna be $3,900, and I go to the bank, say, I need 5,000. Why do you need 5,000? You're only buying the item for 3,900. What are you gonna do with the other money? You know, I don't think that's an irrelevant question when you're a city councilman and you're in charge of the budget and, and expenditures and stuff like that. If they've got other uses for it, that's fine. I'm just saying for what they've asked, it's, if you're $60,000 above what you're actually asking for, why are you asking for that much? Do you need seven cars? Then ask for seven. Do, do you know, you know what I'm saying? I'm getting down to actually what we spend and pay for each item and what it costs and what they want to equip it. And the bids that were, came in on the bathrooms and other things, the, the new salt barn and, you know, stuff like that. If the bid is $49,879 for the salt barn, that's what they should ask, not 60,000. Do things change? I'm sure they change. I've been a contractor for 50 years. And you have to account some of that in. But as far as appropriating the money, and some departments say that they've got money in their budget still, and they have to use some of that, they understand that. This is a wish list. We usually don't ever do this. I've never done it, been on the council for five years. We usually do this before budget hearings and get a wish list and see where we're at on our budget, how much money we got, give the departments additional stuff above and beyond what their budget is on each department. This comes after, and it just kinda, well, it's another two, 2,200,000 on top of the 34 million that we've already had budgeted. So, you know, why? Didn't we put enough in the budget to get them what they needed? Or, I mean, we have to look at this. And then, you know, we've got it, we've got a property tax reduction coming also. It's in, it's going to the Senate. And that's gonna hit, that's gonna hit us probably a million dollars. And, you know, we're gonna have to allocate for that some way, somehow. It could be more than that. Because if the, if the governor rejects it, it could go back to the Senate because they've already amended it. And if he doesn't like the amendment, it can go back to the Senate, and they have to go back through it and do the full property tax cut. So there's a lot of things that I'm looking at.
Okay, I, I appreciate all the, all the information you provided, but I still did not hear the specific items you thought were over and above the, what was necessary. And that, to me, is the micromanaging part. I do not work in the departments to know that if they need X, Y, or Z. So I, I would never say, oh, I don't think you need that unless... I mean, I think they're asking for it for a reason. So I, I'm still curious as to what those items were and what the total was of that.
Did you get my email? I sent you a list of everything.
I didn't see it till...
Yeah, and I know Nick sent it out yesterday, didn't you last night?
Two o'clock this morning. I work 24/7.
I sent another one out today.
I saw that.
So it had everything on there.
Well, and I think that that's some of the issue, though, is that it didn't come out until today. None of us saw it until today. I mean, I still work full-time and didn't get a chance to look at it. And so trying to compare this, and then I hear that you have other documents that were not sent with this. I'm kind of curious about those documents, to look at those. Because I think we do need to make sure that the bids and when the timeframe was and what pricing's going on now, we need to make sure that there's enough to handle when a clean bid is, is received. Because otherwise, then you are gonna have them dipping into their current budgets to pay the additional amount over and above what the bid was in January, December, when this first started. And I know that the capital improvement plan was something we talked about during the budget process, that he didn't want that to be part of the normal budget so that we could look at what the difference was for revenues, which handled the budget versus what was sitting in reserves that could be used for capital. And that's a pretty standard budget practice to do it that way. But if we wanted to go the other way, then now's the time to have that discussion. So when we do budgets starting in June, the department heads are gonna, really gonna have to start working on it to get those wishes for next year together so that we can change that process. We're all new together, you know, so...
Sure, sure. And I understand that. And I, and I appreciate that. But all these documents were available to everybody on the council. I just went ahead and did it on my own. As far as taking to the third reading, that's the process that we're supposed to go through, is to take the time until we make the final passage, is to do our homework and make sure that we're fiscally responsible for the taxpayers' money. But as far as the documents, you can get them from all the department heads or whoever. I just went ahead and asked for them and physically went down and looked at some of the equipment and stuff. And, and looked at the physical buildings that needed replaced and the physical bathrooms that were gonna be put in. I, I'd make it a point to do that when they ask for something, to make sure that, yeah, we need it. Or why do we need it? And I try to get all those questions asked. That's why I asked it to go to third reading. I'm going through the process. Every appropriation should go through three readings, so we have the time. But as far as the documentation, you can get the same documentation I got from all the department heads and everything on the cost and everything else.
Well, but if you're looking at it from this perspective, you had the time to go do all this, which I appreciate, because I didn't. I didn't have the time to come down here when, when it was open. And that's where I feel like if you went to all that effort, then maybe you should share that information with us so that we can see what you're looking at. Because I do trust the mayor. I do trust the department heads to tell us what they need and to know that when they round it up, they round it up responsibly. But I don't think it's my place to go and look at every single tool that's in the barn for whichever maintenance department it is. Because that's up to their department head. And if they're not doing the right job and they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing, then the mayor needs to be dealing with that. They're his employees. We are just responsible for making sure the proper amount is given. And if we don't trust them with that, then we have a whole nother issue going on besides just the capital improvement plan.
So can I add some stuff in here? Just wanna kind of keep this shit moving forward somewhat. Yeah, hypothetical, Gary. So essentially, if you were to subtract out what those differences between the bids, estimates, and the, the original ask, we talked about the 150,000. That would leave $2,500,000. My question is, and I know you had a meeting with the mayor, and I hope you're able to answer this, or maybe you could pull in the controller as well. But do you have 100% confidence that you could purchase all of those asks for $2,500,000?
I mean, to purchase everything as it was originally submitted, we, we need the whole amount. That's, that's it.
I don't, I, I don't have a problem with, you know, since, you know, the, the mayor said that if he doesn't spend the money, it'll, it'll go back or stay, it'll have to stay in the Board of Works. It actually doesn't go back to the general fund. But anyhow, i-if, if he's confident and he doesn't use all the money, then I'll withdraw my amendment if that makes everybody happy.
Well, and I think, you know, I really appreciate, like, what Councilman Marshall said. I mean, we've had many discussions on this. And I appreciate, you know, your passion in being a conservative. But kind of to roll back to your point, you know, we, we do have the ability to look at the claims and see what's being spent. I think it's one of those situations, trust but verify. And that verification process is the claims process. And so I have the mayor's word that this appropriation, if appropriated, would only be used for those particular items they're asking for. And then we have that ability to go through the claims process and determine, okay, what have we used this for? And how much did that item end up costing? And if it's not used, okay, that money will roll over into next year. I did wanna add one other thing I didn't, I meant to mention at the last meeting. And I really appreciate the Controller's Office getting me this information. But, so when I originally submitted this question, we were still looking at the amount for the Marion Arts Commission. So I'd asked, you know, if the 50,000 for the Marion Arts Commission passed and the 2.2 million request for the capital improvement plan, how much is left extra, we'll say, in the, how much do we have in cash reserve? And the number they gave me was 9,215,459. That's a 38.47% reserve. DLGF recommends 15% to 20%. Some people will say 18% to 22%. There's some variance in there a little bit. So we're well over our cash reserve. This isn't, I just wanted the public to hear that because I don't want people to think, oh, here we go, we're going broke. We have a, we have a very healthy cash reserve. In fact, it is recommended. I think you made, made that point about, you know, not, I, I hate the word spending it. I would say investing it in what we need. But, you know, as a conservative myself, I don't think that's just a ticket to go, let's just go spend it on whatever. My opinion is the requests that have been asked are all things that I believe are needs. You know, we put our trust in these department heads to determine what they need and what, what is best to serve our citizens of this community. And I put that trust in the department heads. And I have no reason to not. Nobody, no department head has given me, as a council member, a reason not to. So I'm okay continuing as the 2.2 with the commitment from the mayor that this money is only gonna be used for those particular items. So that's all I have to say. Any other council members?
I do, I talked to a lot of the department heads. This is not a wish list. This is what we have to have. Not one person ever said this. And so I'm, I'm letting the public know, this is not a wish list at all. Needs, not wants, yes, sir. Thank you, Andy.
Well, one last thing. I was in the control, or not the control, the, um, my, one of my favorite offices in City Hall, the Clerk's Office. They do such a fantastic job and keep us together here on the council. But I was in there yesterday and just their desks, you know. I mean, you don't have to go very far around here. Deputy Clerk Ayesha's desk is falling apart. If I got any too big clothes, it probably would've torn my pants. And, and we jokingly said, if we keep that desk, she's gonna need a clothing allowance. And why that's funny, it's very true all across City Hall. So there's another desk in there that literally, if you, it's, I don't know if it's being helped by zip ties or what, but this is the state of which we're in. These desks that are in the Clerk's Office go back to, like, 1980? They are older than Clerk Goodman's tenure here, which is a fantastic tenure. It's a short time, right? But they're that old. And I'm not saying just because things are old, we shall replace. But they're old and falling apart. So that's, I will digress. Any other council members?
Mr. President, if you're ready for a motion.
I am.
Mr. President, I move that we pass additional appropriation, number two, 2025, as submitted.
Second. Motion by Councilman Kane, a second by Councilman Calgill. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Fordyce?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes. Additional appropriation two dash 2025 has passed. And I just wanna make a comment. I appreciate all the council members. That was excellent, thorough conversation. I think we would be a model for other city councils on how we handle that. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
That's all the business we have. Thank you, Mayor, for coming. Thank you for the department heads that came back tonight. And any council members with any announcements they'd like to make? All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Councilman Calgill, second by Councilman Klein. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Fordyce?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you everyone for coming tonight.[1494.21]